Quick and easy. It's one page. Proud of that. So I'll do what I've done in the past, and I'll just go through the numbers quickly and tell you about why the increases or reductions have taken place.
Actually, Lynda, real quick, just so you know, the council is looking at those pages that we had handed out.
Yeah, I didn't know. That's not, I've never done it that way before.
Okay, but just so you know what they're looking at is the other.
So I tried to hurry up and match them up. So I can do it that way for the most part. Okay, sorry. Yes. No, I know, I've got that. It's just that mine aren't in that.
No, it's okay. Let me go ahead and present.
You sure?
Absolutely. The council will ask questions and they'll follow.
Okay, good. All right. The first one I have is office expenses and advertising. The advertising mostly is for posting jobs. And this particular budget, because in under office expenses, I was told by the IT department this year that I needed to replace our desktops because they're very old and they're very slow. And so what we did instead of replacing the desktops is we are replacing laptops instead of the desktops and having docking stations so that the applications that we have to pay to put on each device, we now only have to put on one. And those will be portable. We'll have docking stations over at Ops because two of us at least go over operations every once in a while. Johani goes over twice a week. So we've done that. So the actual office supplies, in order to try to compensate, I've reduced that from $750 to $250. The other expense that's on here is printer ink because we are not under a maintenance contract, so we have to pay for our own ink on our printers. The next one is professional development. I reduced that by $500 from $1,750 to $1,250. And the renewal of our membership with Skill Path, which allows us to have, it's a subscription so we can do trainings for ourselves, for HR, and also use it to train other people, which we've done this year with several new management hires, which has worked out really well. The show membership, I've only allowed one membership this year. We're going to share it. So that brought that down from, if we had all three of us, it would be $750. We're only getting one. So that's down to $250. We also have training other than Skill Path, and we also attend the CCM training, which is of no cost to us. That's staying the same because sometimes we need to go on the outside to get special training that's not offered by either CCM or by Skill Path. And we didn't do much traveling last year for training. We did none. So I don't know what's going to happen, so I knocked that down from $250 to $150 for 200 miles of training travel or conferences. The next is contract services. For our EAP, HR pays for the entire employee population, and we did increase our count to 215. So that went up from 3,000 to 3,850. Printer annual maintenance, down from 700 to 250. We purchased two new printers this year, so our maintenance should be minimal. Our incentive solutions is our attendance, I'm sorry, is our rewards for longevity. It's also has safety built into it as incentives for safe practices. And we added this year an incentive to attend our safety meetings. They're not always well-attended, so there's a new incentive. If you, if you attend 85% of the meetings, you get another reward. So that's just for the HR department, and that went from 300 to 400. I decreased our attorney fees from $10,000 to $5,000. I've been decreasing those every year because it doesn't seem that we use them. Most of our issues are with the union. Of course, as soon as I did this on the budget, we had a bunch of issues that came up that are non-union and that are employment-related. So I believe, well, we're going to try to keep it down to the 5,000 and hope for the best. Employment posters. We have to put up employment posters. That's the law. We have to put them in several different places. In fact, because of our different facilities and how large some of them are, we had to order nine sets, which is $900. And I again have put in for a human resource information system. We do not have one. And this will reduce our workload substantially. It'll add efficiency, accuracy, timeliness. We, we do replication. We do spreadsheets instead of running reports out of the system that we have now because it's so cumbersome. This HRIS system is, it's Bamboo HR. You've probably heard about it on the radio. It's always out there. We've taken a look at it three times with IT. We think it's going to be a really good product for us. It's a per head, per member, per month cost. So it'll cost $23,000 each year. Now, we're going to be setting this up so perfectly that if we ever move to another enterprise system that gives us a good HRIS system, we'll be able to just move that along, move it out of one system into another. So that's, that's my big ask this year. Utilities and fuel. I'm not letting anybody put the heat on, so that's gone down from 1,200 to 1,000. We're saving $200. Employees. I put in a 2.5%. Ron, I'm not sure what we're doing this year, right? So I put a 2.5% increase in, which just, you know, dollar for dollar brings it up to another And then FICA went up 394, and our benefits went up $4,179. So the total increase to the HR budget is $30,000, which increases it by nine point, Ron has 9.28%, I've got 9.14%. I'll give him the 2.8. I don't know which dollars are different.
Questions for Debbie Mary Depot.
Thank you for the thorough explanation. And I, it's obviously very clear that you've tried to shift money to put it where it can better be used. My question is, how old is the HR system you're using right now?
We don't really have one. It's the Springbrook system, which is basically for, I'm going to get this wrong, is it for the billing system for work orders? Not for work orders, is it? The accounting system. Okay. So it's got a module for HR and a module for payroll. The reporting is so cumbersome that it's very hard to run reports. So for instance, we have 15 spreadsheets that we use. In addition to entering information into Springbrook, we also enter it into separate spreadsheets. We spend so much time duplicating work, and we still don't have it right because you have to put it into several different places. So one may get lost along the way because we get so many interruptions. With this system, you put it in once, and the, the reporting is so easy. It's just clicking on the different headings that you want. When we bring in someone, we've done so many, so many, over 50 new hires since I've been here, almost four years. You bring them in as the candidates, and then, once they're in the system, you just move them along to candidate, to a new hire. They get all their information. We can send it to them. They have a login into the HRIS system to do all their, all their forms. And right now with our seasonals, we hire 50, we have 55 people that are seasonals. We had 43 returning, and we're looking at, I guess, 10 that are, need to be hired. The paperwork for them has been horrible. It's been very hard getting all the paperwork in. And so we're going back and forth with emails all the time. Very inefficient use of our time.
So we've been trying to force fit this into the system that we have, and it doesn't work. So that's why we're going, we're going to try this. We think this is going to work. On the side, I talked to Sue of Blatchett, our IT GM, general manager of IT, and she's going to look to see if she can get Springbrook to work. We're not, we're not sure if it's going to work or not, but we need something to help with the workload here. Because if you go back, at one point, it was just HR and one specialist or generalist. And then we hired one other person, and then they're still very busy. And when we're, when you do hires over in the utility, if you're hiring from within, that's good, but then you've got to hire a fill and move them. So you may do two or three interviews because you filled one position up here and you're having to backfill others. And so that's why we're in this. Go ahead. Debbie Mary Depot.
I just wanted to comment. I've used accounting systems, and they're obviously not made for HR. So I would imagine it's also difficult for your staff to always do it correctly. It must be a pain. And I just wanted to add that I'm happy that we're doing this because this kind of streamlining is also better for employee relations. Because when you get hired, it's a nightmare when it takes forever to get your paperwork through and all of that. So I'm happy to see we're streamlining that a little, because I like to see improvements in employee happiness, employee culture.
Absolutely. I'm 100% with you on that one. And something else that happens that will be helpful is, because we've got eight unions, everybody's vacation time is different, and they all hit the, you know, their length of service changes to how many extra days they get. Once they hit 10 years and 15 years, it's very, very difficult to get that over to payroll on time. Because again, it's another spreadsheet that we have to keep up and change when people hit their next level. So all of this is just going to be really great. I hope.
Any other comments? Counselor Sheffield.
Replacing of the lap, how much, how many laptops were you looking to?
We're bringing in two laptops this year. Well, I bought one already. I've got one coming in for this fiscal year, and then we'll do the next one next year.
Counselor Norris.
If I may, I'm not quite sure who the first question is to. But procedurally, is there a percent increase for salaries that's across the board? Because you kind of said you didn't know.
I wasn't sure. Well, we usually, we usually look at what's, go ahead.
Do you want me to take that?
You go right ahead.
So with our contracted labor, we have contract agreements that we, we bargain. And so there is a percentage there by contract. Typically, what we've done here in the past is for non-union is we afford the same increase. So we typically pick, we haven't put that out yet in a letter, right?
No.
No, this year's number hasn't been decided. We just had the 2.5 as a placeholder for budgeting purposes.
Right. So it was, it was a budget holder. We still have not decided and put out what that number's going to be.
Got it. Thank you.
So that's, that's how we, we do it here. Different municipalities do it differently. You know, everybody has their own way of doing it, but that's, I inherited that. I'm okay with it. We're still, we're still looking at our evaluation system and merit raises and all those kind of things. We're not quite there yet. So that's why we do it like we do it.
Sure. Again, I apologize.
It's okay.
In terms of healthcare costs, is that in HR or is that somewhere else?
That's in finance.
That's in finance.
It's in this, it's in the HR budgets and all the department's budgets.
Got it.
But that is administered by finance.
All right, thanks. And then, so the HR system you are using now is called Springbrook?
It's Spring, it's a module in Springbrook.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're looking to purchase and try out a different type of HR system?
Correct.
How much was that again? I'm sorry.
It's $23,000.
Now, did you have the opportunity to check into any municipal type?
Yes, NeoGov.
Yeah, and this?
They were so expensive. They're all down in the Greenwich area, all their customers, you know? I, I called, they called me several times, and I said, you are so out of reach for us. It was very expensive. I looked at paychecks and Paycom also, last year and the year before. So this seemed like the most reasonable and could do a lot of what we do manually.
Okay, thank you. And with your budget that you have this year, is there any one or two specific goals that you're trying to achieve in fiscal year '22?
Well, my goal since I've been here is to make HR much more efficient and helpful to payroll, to the employees, get things done on time and accurately. As you can see, there's not a whole lot that goes on here. It's a lot about people. And that's what I need it for. And that's probably the biggest, that is the biggest item for me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other counselors? Debbie Mary Depot.
The computers, obviously that is an increased cost this year. That's not a cost that's going to continue annually.
Correct.
So next year, that will go down. I also want to comment. I think it's a great idea to have laptops because for any other reason, if we have an issue where we can't be in the municipal building, it allows people to work from home, probably much easier to have a company laptop than to have to use their own.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, we can't use our own anyway because it's not permitted, which is fine. But yes, having, like I said, the best thing is that the applications only go on one device rather than my laptop at home here and the one in Ops.
Right.
It does give us some flexibility and resiliency, and we saw that this year during the COVID period. So, any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Lynda.
Thank you.
All right, plan. Leslie? Page 43 is where the description starts. The budget starts on 45, and the detail is 46.
Sierra, put this all together so everybody can see. I don't. Clearly, we didn't rehearse. The quick synopsis is that, as at least most of you know, this is my first year doing a budget before all of you. So, and it's also my first year doing a budget during COVID. So my, I worked basically on the assumption that when this budget was being prepared, it was done not with the anticipation of COVID, so that it was done with the anticipation of its being a normal year. And so I changed very little. The, if you look at, on page, I think it's 49, or you can look at the screen, the changes, there's a $25,000 change, and that is to pay for our portion of a new resiliency officer. We have somebody who we're going to be sharing a position. Yes?
It's page 46 in your budget book. We're still in planning.
I heard 49.
Sorry.
All right.
That's why we, that's why we're up there. So the, so that's the reason for the difference in that one-line item. It's to cover a portion of, a portion of a position slot. We're working very hard on resilience. And we have, I've talked to the town about what we would want that position to do. I've talked to, gotten utilities about what we'd want that person to do within, they're thinking about working on resiliency from their end as well. So we're looking to try and make this as affordable and reasonable as possible. So everybody's sort of taking a piece of it. This is our piece. It's a, can you go back one, Jill? Sorry. That's really the nuts and bolts of it. I'm happy to, to talk about what that position may do. The job description hasn't been finalized yet, but it's been.
We've been talking about, we've been talking about resilience for
Yeah.
A couple of years now. The town, John Burke, town manager, call me, talked about it. So we're picking up a day, and they're going to have the rest. And so we're funding a day's worth of an individual. Individual has not been hired yet. I'll be sitting on the board to hire that, or Leslie will probably, to, to select the individual. But they will be working on resiliency issues, and they'll report to Leslie. We're looking at a couple of different things. One, how it impacts planning and zoning and those kind of things, and also infrastructure. So we currently have, and I think some of you are aware, we currently have someone working on some resiliency study now. And they will be reporting out when they report out to us. So we have some actions that'll come out. So that's the resiliency person. All right? So, go ahead. I'm sorry, Debbie Mary Depot.
Is that $25,000? Is that a fully loaded number? Are we paying for a portion of their health care and all that stuff, too?
So the way that this is set up, and Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the town will be funding that position. There will be an employee of the town, and we are contracting with them. So we will be like a contracting to the town and paying a percentage.
So it's not going to be like, oh, his health insurance is more expensive than we thought, so we're going to charge you more money? They're not going to do that to us, are they?
Well, they shouldn't. They, they, John, town manager and I, John Burke, talked about the range that they were, that they were going to offer in the position. We come up with a number, and he said, here, and he did, we did the math, and he said, here's the number we're looking for, for your support, fully loaded. So I don't expect them to come back and say, we're going to need more.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that answers your question. Okay, Leslie?
I know this is, you know, budget meeting, and it's about the finances, but I just want to make clear, this is now, we're now moving into phase two of something that we have been working on phase one of. So we, you know, we've had a plan to move this forward. It is moving forward, and, and this is the, the next step, is to hire somebody who can, once we have, what was, Mylona McBroom, they're now SLR. They're going to be doing that in that study with giving us kind of a toolbox, and then there'll be the execution of that toolbox. A lot of the tools are tools that, you know, the town and the city can both use. Some are site-specific, but.
Right. And at this point, we didn't feel that we could justify, justify a full-time position. And so that's why we went in this direction. We, as the position grows and as things go on, we'll have to decide what we're going to do. One of the things that I've asked the utility to do is to, because the utility has a lot of infrastructure within the, the area that could be prone to the 28th sea level rise in 30 years, that they're going to be evaluating this and possibly having a full-time person resiliency, and then this position might go away because John said that they may grow more over there. So right now, we're starting, and our activities align. The city and the town are both looking at resiliency. We both have coastal access, and what's good for one is good for the other, and the applications of something that may apply on, on their part of the water might apply to our part of the shore as well. So it's something we're looking at. And we got us, we have to start somewhere, and this is where we're starting. Sorry, Counselor Sheffield.
Yes, so this position will be in, will be temporary in scope until it develops more to where we can make it.
Until it changes, right. And we don't, we honestly don't know what that change is going to be and when that change is going to be. But we both anticipate, both, meaning town manager, Burke and I, both anticipate that it's going to change. And one of the things that I've talked to the utility about is because of the infrastructure, and I'm talking about sewer lines, water lines, electric, the fact that we have an electric plant here, excuse me, a sewer plant here on the water, do we need to harden? Do we need to move? You know, what is it we need to do? And because of the amounts, the miles of infrastructure that they own, it may be worthwhile for them to have their own resilience person. So they're evaluating that, and that may come up next year in the budget. Counselor Norris.
Thank you very much. I wanted to say thank you for the comment that you made at the end. It says, I know it's a budget meeting, but, because folks need to know that there is a plan, and the numbers do tell a story. And obviously, you do have that plan, and you do know the story. So thank you very much for explaining that.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else before we continue? Okay, Leslie, please continue.
So the one other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is that we will be making some changes to the zoning regulations. And I very deliberately did not put money in for a consultant for that. That'll be done in-house. That is something I have done a lot of in my, have a lot of that in my background. And so that will definitely be something that is done in-house. It's one of those things. I don't let, I don't let that out of my arms. That's, honestly, that's, I'm not changing a lot.
Okay. Questions from the council? All right. And then, that's it. Thank you, Leslie. We'll go on to economic development. We start on page four, excuse me, 48.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So the biggest change in my budget would be for the contractual services. And that is because we are, it's two projects that are under this. So there's Visioning Fame Street, and then there's also the Strategic Communications Initiative that we, we are working on. Okay. So in essence, for the, the idea for the Visioning Fame Street, this year, we got awarded a grant from Preservation Connecticut to help us actually execute this Visioning Fame, Visioning Fame Street project, where it's basically a, a phase two from the Nennett Grant Partners study into real estate development along Fame Street. So we got a grant from Preservation CT for about $25,000. We're matching it with five. So for planning purposes, we are requesting 30 for next year to do either visioning Five Corners or visioning Bridge Street. On the next slide, it gives a view of the Tiff District, and basically kind of forms a C with the Bridge Street being at the top, Fame Street in the center, and the Five Corners just below that. So this, this funding would be to continue with this planning of real estate development in the city. So, yeah. No, the one with the graphic, yeah. So this year, through that grant, we'll be focusing on the pink area. And then for the following fiscal year, we will move on to the blue and the green. For the, if you go to the next slide, for the strategic communications, we are going to be going into phase two of that. We are asking for an increase in our budget for $12,250 for the city's portion, and then Gotten Utilities will be contributing $15,000 for their portion to complete that one project. And those are my explanations of the biggest changes for.
Okay. Questions on economic development? Ron?
I just want to point one thing out in the budget book on page 50, in the prior year. In the prior year, under office supplies and advertising, you'll see that at 16.5 and it's down to 1500. $15,000, that is really contractual services and should have been down in the contractual services line last year, where, so that change is really 17,000 to the 44,250, and no change in office supplies. So, I just wanted to point that, just a change of where we put that contracting, so.
Right, because if you look at it, it's like, whoa. So, anyway, Counselor Norris, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a lot of the increases that you're talking about, are they one-time expenses, meaning they're not going to be around, so to speak, in 2023, or?
So, for the visioning work, it would be, it will come around again because it's three areas that we're trying to really do a focused real estate development on. So, this would come up, I guess, one more time. And then for the strategic communications, that 12, 25, it is a one-time for phase two, but there will be certain vendor services fees that we would have to maintain to continue the communications effort after. But it won't be as much as it is now, it wouldn't go significantly.
All right, thank you.
So, one of the things that Director Yousa and I looked at in forecasting, going forward for the next three years, is this sustainable or is it not? If you look at the expenditures from 2017 to date, we have increased spending by $2.2 million a year. So, or $2.2 million for GRAT, that's a difference. One of the things we talked about is that question, is it a one-time expense, meaning capital improvement or stuff like that, or is it a recurring expense? And when I was going through the different areas, we have some capital and things, and so, those are one-time expenses and they'll go away, or you can cut those out and kick the can down the road, as they say, if you have to, in order to support the budget. The way the budget is set up now, we should be okay for another year or so before we have to take a real tight look. But when it came to economic development, economic development is, this project is going to be over, but then there's going to be another project to replace that project. So, the answer is, yes, this is finite, but then there'll be, there'll probably be another economic development project in order, because economic development is continuous in the city of Groton, right? You can't just, okay, economic development, we're good, okay, we're done, let's go home, right? Because if you're not moving forward, you're not moving at all. So, that's that. But one of the things that we have, and I mentioned this before, is that we have the fees coming in from building. And then, we have buildings that are being constructed, and then once they get on the grand list, especially the ones that are an electric boat, they're in an enterprise zone. So, they will come in on a five-year payback. So, it'll be 20%, then 40, and then work their way up to 100% payback. So, one of the things that we projected, and it's not an exact science, although you can't put it on paper and try to figure it out, but when does this go away and when does this come up? And there is, in a couple of years, there's a gap period that is, we're going to have to take some hard looks at the budget. Now, one of the things that we're doing now is, we're keeping our general fund up. The lenders wanted between 20 and 25%. We're at 24.1%. So, that gives us a nice cushion there. So, and we're anticipating additional fees next year, that will add additional cushion to that general fund. So, that's something that I've asked Director Yousa to look at with me, and something, instead of looking year to year, we're looking three years out. And we're looking at revenues based on projected builds, although you can't always count on that. And then we're looking at expenses based on history, and based on what we think is coming up. We evaluated doing a three to five-year rolling average or doing a straight mathematical average. We decided to go with the mathematical average. And so, we're forecasting expenses and forecasting revenues and seeing if there's a delta and where that is, and what, and thinking now, what am I, what do we need to do a year and two years out, so that we're not rapidly raising taxes on citizens. So, so far, we've been able to do this because of the fees, and we lowered taxes, and then last year we're level, this year we're level. So, that strategy is working so far.
Thank you.
Any questions on economic, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Is there, or are there grants that we could apply for again this coming year that might impact your budget? I know, because we, there's been a few times where you've had grants for different projects. Are there any grants that maybe we haven't applied for yet that we might be eligible for, that you could pursue for this year to maybe offset these increases?
There are grants that we can apply for, but they are for implementation, whereas this grant is for, the grant that we're getting happens to be a planning grant, and then the money we're asking to move forward are for the planning exercises. So, once we do the planning, I do feel confident that we'll have grants to actually execute the implementation of the plans.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I wanted to say is, I think, you know, we've put a big emphasis on economic development, and I think that's been really important. We have had in the last four years, many new businesses, and I know that you've worked with the businesses, and I know we've tried to streamline the process of getting businesses going and their paperwork and all that stuff, which I know in some cities is very complicated. So, I just want to say, I think it's really important that we fund the Economic Development Department and keep that going, because as a, if you're going to a city to open a business, I think having staff that you can communicate with well is very important, so.
Absolutely. Counselor Norris?
I'm sorry again. So, I commend you for everything that you do, and finding a connection between that long-range plan and finding grants and doing surveys, that kind of stuff. But like anything else, when do you foresee, or what do you foresee in the next 12, 24 months, at some point of implementation? Do you know what specifically that would look like, or one thing that it is that's going to hit the ground, so to speak?
So, our implementation strategy is going to be phased. Since we're in a community where we still kind of need to discuss what, like, we need to discuss our walkability, bikeability, we need to discuss our infrastructure, there's a lot of deep diving the city of Groton has to do as a community. So, this process allows us to plan and then phase out implementations through, a common phrase, which, I mean, there's a lot of different terminologies for it, but if you look up tactical urbanism is probably the most widely used phrase of doing it, where we do these low-cost implementations that are temporary, just to test out different design concepts, and then we use that data to help us plan for a longer-term vision, and then we can actually do more hard, permanent implementations at a later date, once we get that funding source in place.
Counselor Shavell?
Yes, Sierra, we know since our meeting last Wednesday regarding that American Rescue Plan, to get that access for those grants that has been passed by Congress. So, that's going to be a very important piece that we can use to fund programs and infrastructure projects for the city. So, I'm pretty excited of that potential opportunity that we have.
We got to keep our ears, ears to the gauge to see exactly what they're going to roll out with the American Rescue Plan, but yes, that is an opportunity.
The other thing we need to, I want to look, we need to look at those things. The other thing we need to look to see if we're going to be eligible. For example, a lot of the funds are going to the town, they're not going to the city. So, they're going to the 169 recognized municipalities in the state of Connecticut. And therefore, for example, the 3. whatever it is million dollars that's coming to the town, that's coming to the town, and there is no carve-out for the city. None. And so, that's going to go to town programs, but the city residents are eligible for those programs, and the city businesses are going to be eligible for those programs.
So, what you're saying is, the city cannot request on its own for federal government funding?
What I'm saying is, the federal government funding goes to the state, and then it comes to the municipalities. Some of these things, some of the grants, the city can apply for. So, we need to look at those to see if we're eligible for, and if we're eligible, we should apply. The point that I'm trying to make is that just because it's the American Relief Funds doesn't automatically mean that it's coming to the city of Groton. For example, I talked to John Burke, and we had a long-term recovery committee meeting, and it was stated there that the funds that are coming now, 3.8, I think is the number, is coming to the town. And then the town will determine where those funds goes, because those are for businesses and for those people that have been adversely affected and things like that. The infrastructure funds may be under a separate portion, and therefore, eligibility may be different. Does that make sense?
Well, it makes sense. So, basically, you're saying is, again, we have to ask for the town for the money, basically, is what you're saying.
Well, we need to ask, first of all, we need to see if the city of Groton as a borough is eligible. There are some things that we've gone after before, that we've been told from the state, we're not eligible, only the town is eligible. So, sometimes, we have asked the town to look at something on our behalf, but if the town's also interested in it, then the town is going to take a look at it for the town and not necessarily for the city. But the city residents can benefit, because if you live in the city, you live in the town.
Correct. Okay, so, I understand what you're saying now, so, which, back to what I was saying, we have to, again, ask the town for the funds if we want projects here in the city with that type of funding. We have to go to the town for it.
Maybe.
Okay. Because my thought, again, that we would have that direct access, since we are a municipality, that we can do our own request for the funds. But if you're saying the funds have to come from the town, and we got to request the town, and hopefully, the town will?
What I'm saying is, there are different pots of money, and there are different requests. And so, some request, not all the requests are the same. The American Relief Funds that the town is getting now, the 3.8, it's either 2 or 3.8, I think it is, million dollars, is going to the town, and there is no carve-out for the city of Groton.
But unless we request, now, unless, I mean, I'm saying.
Even if we request it, we could.
We could request the town for the money?
Yes.
So, that's, basically, that's what I was asking. Since they have the money from the federal government, we would have to then go to the town if we want a piece of that money for our interest here in the city.
But it won't, but it, not necessarily. Just because they have it, doesn't mean we can go say, give me my piece of the money.
Well, no, we're not going to say, give me, you know, our piece of the money, but, not to that degree, but again, we would have to go through similar to asking for highway and police funding. Is that going to be that type of situation where?
The highway and police funding is set up by the special act, right? So, the American Relief Funds are different. All I'm saying is, I'm not trying to be argumentative, what I'm trying to do is clear, is that we need to verify eligibility, that we are eligible for these funds when we go ask for the funds.
Okay.
Whoever we're asking for them from. Is that?
I see what you're saying, but I'm not, you're giving us some sense of leeway, but yet, the purse strings are still tied to the town, so I'm kind of not very clear, but I see where you're trying to go.
Okay, hold on. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I, from what you're saying, I just want to clarify, make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. The thing is that if the town gets the funds, they have no, we have no right to say, give us some, because we take up a portion of your land.
Thank you, yes. Correct, yeah.
Well, but that's what you.
They don't have to give us a dime. If that's going to be the case, we would have to ask, you know, the town for.
Right, but we don't have any claim on any of those funds. That's what the mayor is saying, right?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on economic development?
Can I say something?
Counselor Carter, do you recognize you have the floor?
Yep. Sierra, I appreciate you've done a great job since you've been with the city, and I'm looking forward to what you will continue to do with us. I just want to piggyback on what Counselor Norris said, and I'm one that, I believe I understand what Counselor Norris is saying, because I have similar views. I, for one, I'm kind of over the development phase, or the kind of see what we want phase, and I'm already, I mean, at least personally, I'm already into the implement phase. I think that the city of Groton, it's not a big place at all, and I think that we don't, or we shall not continue to, if we can avoid it, to pay for, outside researches or whatever, to just simply just, you know, I mean, just do grassroots, you know, just kind of ask around like what we want, you know? I know that there's a couple obstacles in our way as far as developing. I mean, for one, Fame Street, I know, people know what the major obstacle is, is, you know, we have a property owner that, you know, is kind of holding tight to his properties, you know? That is a problem, you know? So, I think we need to, you know, tackle things like that. Those are the things that are going to get us in, or I believe that are going to get us into the implementation phase. And the reason why I mention this is financially, you know, it would be kind of disheartening for me to keep paying other people for studies when, if we don't see, you know, if we don't see all this happen, you know, like, I mean, quick. I'm not, I mean, not quick, but I mean, you know, I mean, I expect to be elected again for another two years, and I would say, you know, that makes six years for me, and it's kind of the same thing. And that's not your fault, you know, this goes way before you, way before you. But I think we need to just get it done, you know? So, that's my take on it. And I think that's what, I don't want to speak for Counselor Norris, but I think we need to implement something. I'm kind of over the paying for the studies.
Do you have any questions regarding the budget?
That is regarding the budget, because like I said, as far as the financing of it, I'm kind of overpaying for studies, so that isn't a budget, so it was more of a statement.
Okay. Do you have anything else for economic development?
I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Rashad, and just to, I guess, comment back is, from when I got here, we've paid for basically one study, which was the Nenagret Partner. But honestly, technically, we didn't pay for it, we got a grant from Fame River Innovation Place to conduct that study. That was a very high-level overview of what development stuff, what tools and resources that the city of Groton needs to put in place to actually start progressing forward, and we've got a wealth of information from it in regards to our zoning regulations and land use and our streamlining process, and we've made great strides from the completion of that plan to basically get our house in order. So, this next grant from the Preservation CT is paying, it is paying for a planning study, but it's working with the community to get to the ground level of what are some things that we can actually quickly implement. So, we got the high level, and now we're getting, we're digging further down. So, I completely understand, it's like you're tired of the studies, and I honestly would love to see the implementation as well, and so, just can't.
The last time we spoke about the presentation, you explained this. So, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that I'm hopeful that this is going to work out. That's all I'm saying, you know? I.
Nope, received.
Is there anything else on the economic development budget? Okay, if not, that's it. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to general government, if we can go to page nine. Actually, nine's where it starts. Let's go to page, we can go to page 12. Actually, nine's where it starts, let's go to page, uh, we can go to page 12. So this is under general government, this is legislative policy. It's staying the same. Basically, these are funds that we use for the city council to go to CCM conferences, National UCA cities, other conferences, things like that. So there's no change there. If you go to page 15, this is boards and commissions, and this is primarily for legal fees that could occur as a result of any action from boards and commissions. Ron.
Actually, the main driver in this one and the boards and commissions is for the actuary services.
That's right.
Because all the boards and commissions have their contractual for the legal stuff, so this one is for the retirement board.
For the retirement board.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So this is on page 15. Thank you. And we'll go to page 18, general, general government citizens' participation. This has the beautification day and Groton Day. Deputy Mayor Depot.
I just have a question. We just announced that we're going to do a city cleanup day?
We are, on the 24th.
Are we supplying materials that would come out of this budget, the beautification community events, or is that a different department?
Nope, this would come out of there.
Okay.
Gloves and bags and...
Because it looks like we don't usually use that.
We don't use it a lot.
So I'd like to, I mean, if we can, I would hope every year if we can get a city cleanup and provide those things, that would be a good use of that.
Absolutely, the intent is to get this started and keep it going. Uh, this year, it is a collaborative effort with the Town Beautification Committee, and we are working with the town to, we're going to be working in the city, they'll be working in the town, and there may be some crossover.
And then my other question is, do we, we make money on City Day?
Well, we, we do, because we do sell hot dogs and, and hamburgers and, and sodas and all, but we don't make a profit.
Well, no, right, I was looking at the financing plan, so part of the money for this department comes out of, right, is that not what it says at the bottom?
Nope, that is what it is.
Yeah, there's a budgeted revenue line item for it, like you said, it's very small, and it...
I, I'm just, I, it's good that we can offset the cost.
Yep, absolutely, but Groton City Day is a day that, basically, we're giving back to the people who live and work in the city of Groton. And it's a great way for our departments to, to show off, you know, their, what the services that we do, we have booths and things like that, so. And then on page 20 and then 21 starts the administration. And that's relatively flat. We're not having elections this next year, it's only in the odd years we have the election council. Deputy Mayor Depot.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, we're good.
Um, on recording legal documents, is that fees we pay to the town to record legal documents, or what, what is that? I probably asked the same thing last year because I don't remember.
No, that's, um, where, like Deb's salary and wages are paid for and stuff related to, to that, it's just the cost center. It's all, all items that are related to the expense side.
Legal documentation?
Yeah, it's just the cost center where it gets posted to.
Okay.
This is Counselor McCabe, can I ask a question?
Counselor McCabe, do you recognize you have the floor?
Uh, thank you. Uh, what is the increase in the general support account for?
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please? What, what page and what line, Adam?
Sorry, page 21.
Okay.
Uh, line item four, general support, it looks like it goes up 5,000 or so.
Okay.
Um, what's that increase due to?
Uh, where are we?
Under the cost center?
Yep, we're, I'm phoning a friend.
So that, that would be the admin with, between wages and benefits, and then again, what other cost professional development that's allocated to that cost center. So again, I, I think that we sometimes get caught up on the cost center piece, the next page kind of shows the overall budget and where things are broken out more in detail. That's just, it breaks out leadership being the mayor's piece, the recording of documents being the clerk, and then the general support being the administrative.
Right.
For, as far as, but then the allocation is of the expenses that are on the next page.
Counselor Carter, have a question, I'm looking at something.
Counselor Carter, you, you recognize you have the floor?
I was, I was looking at page 23.
Okay.
Is that, that's in lines of what we're talking about, correct?
Uh...
23?
Page 20, page 23 is, are the salaries.
Yeah, I mean, there yet, I was just looking, I was looking through, but she went to practice 21.
Well, what, what is your question?
I was just looking at the, um, so we, we, the, um, the, uh, our city, our current city clerk is retiring.
Correct.
And, and I see that next year's, um, budgeted amount for city clerk is more than what she's earning now, um, you would think there'd be a reduction in the salary, no?
Well, not necessarily. There could be, but not necessarily.
Well, if, if she has over 20 years of experience, can you explain why the new city clerk would be...
Well, because when, when things, when you start, so, okay, so when you talk about positions and positions as, as, just as the time changes, salaries in the years change, and it's not just about the experience, but it's about the cost of living and those kinds of things.
Oh, okay, but I think, I think that would go back to what Counselor Norris was saying with as far as our structure and our salaries, you know? When we don't have things like that in place, um, it kind of leaves room for, because I understand coal, the cost of living and everything, but I would think somebody with 20 years of, more than 20 years of experience, I mean, unless we're getting somebody on board that has the same, we can think it would be a reduction in a, in a, we think the city would save money hiring a, a new, um, a new clerk.
When, when we have hired other positions in the city, department heads and other positions in the city, the salaries have not gone down significantly.
Okay, I, again, I, I was saying, this would be a situation where you think the city would make a reduction and save money when we have a clerk with over 20 years of experience at the top, but yet, when she retires, we're hiring somebody that's making more than our current clerk for over 20 years has ever made in her career. That, that, if, you know, we don't have to go back and forth on this, it's just something that I just saw, because I've advocated for the city clerk in the past as far as salary goes, and I just, I just don't see the, uh, I still don't see the reasoning behind it, but we can afford...
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to ask on that same note, I know we had several candidates for the city clerk position this year. From what I understand, the way we chose was partly a person with more experience than the other candidates. I just want to clarify that.
We did, and, and when, so, one of the things that, if we ever have a charter change, I'm going to recommend is making the clerk a non-political position and making it, making the clerk's position either staff or work under H R, because I don't see the reason to have, you put somebody in there just because they're political. When we conducted the interviews, we'd asked for resumes, and Megan's resume, she has quite a bit of experience that she brings with her from other companies of where she's worked. So that is, is different, but our method for, for having a clerk this year is different than what we've done in the past.
Okay. I'm not, by, by any means am I saying that she's not qualified to, I mean, I'm all about salaries, yeah, I mean, pay, pay for where you work. I'm, I'm, and that, that's the reason why I'm actually stating that, you know? Um, I, I just didn't, I just didn't know if that would be an automatic deduction or for, but you, you can answer my question, I guess.
Counselor Norris.
Um, thank you. Just a quick question on page 22 with office supplies and advertising. I noticed that our actual in '20 was, let's say, 65, budgeted 95, our estimated this year is 45, but then we're going back up to 95, so I didn't know if this, we're following a trend or if there's a reason behind that.
I think I can answer that without help.
And I know it's only 5,000.
No, no, during the, during the COVID year, and we had executive orders that allowed us, we did not have to, to put the notices in the paper, and we were allowed to just put them on the website, and that saved us quite a bit of money. Because if, correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, it's about $300 a posting or something like that?
It depends on the size of the, um...
Okay, thank you.
Of the posting.
Thank you, Mayor.
But that's where we, we got the cost savings and that's why we're going back up. We, we recognize that we are still in COVID-ish, but we think at some point the executive order is going to go back to, we have to publish in the newspaper, and that's why we're increasing that line item. Now, if we don't spend the money, then it all goes back to the general fund, and we won't just waste it. Counselor Norris, go ahead. No, you looked like you were...
I'm late.
Okay? Anyone else? Okay? So, and, so that's it. Any other questions on general government?
One more, yeah.
Counselor Sheffield.
Recording legal documents, was he, what was he going to, it was like 25,000, I think, for what? My mic off.
Number, uh, number two, recording legal documents on page 21.
There was an increase when we go in the line to line, so you're going to have increase in salaries and benefits that are going to be, make up a portion of that, and then you're also going to have, we did increase, I believe it was legal, this year as well, which is under contractual services, and I'm not sure if it fell under the...
Attorney fees, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that $5,000 increase in contractual services was an increase in legal, that's just a general legal.
Okay.
Any other questions on general government? Okay, thank you. We will move on to finance. Excuse me, finance starts on, the introduction starts on page 29. Ron, you can guide us to which page you would like to look at?
On page 30, which is the summary page, just the finance proposed budget is up from 729,606 to 744,324, or just a little bit over 2%. If we flip to page 32, which again is the summary of all the expenses, you'll see the largest increase there is in full-time employees. And the reason for that increase, which is, we talked about previously, a 2.5% for salaries, the employees in finance are union and they, they'll step. If you remember last year when I presented the budget, we had decreases in salaries due to retirements and reversing back and their contract settled, so this is to true up, to get them to the correct step as they're going through the, for increases. And then you'll see also, when you look at the estimate versus even the actuals for 2020 and the estimates for 2021, some of those lines looked skewed, meaning the admin assistant and the senior accountant, those were both retirements. Well, actually, let me rephrase that, one, one was a retirement, meaning the senior accountant, and that position is, has not been filled yet with COVID coming in, we made the decision to kind of wait to get through that. Then you'll also see the changes in the admin assistant and also accounting assistant. The, the accounting assistant retired, the admin assistant moved into the accounting assistant position. So there was just some, there was two retirements that created the change last year, and then that's what's creating the increase this year is based on step increases throughout. The other changes, and I'll just talk about benefits a little bit, because you're going to see it across the board. The health, health insurance, medical insurance line was roughly a 4% increase. We are self-funded, so it was what we determined that we needed to put into our self-insurance plan in order to keep that properly funded for, for medical. The pension, you'll see increases again across the board there. We changed some assumptions this year with our 7120 actuarial evaluation. We reduced our interest rate assumption, which we've, all municipalities have been kind of high, and we've been all trying to bring it back down. By reducing that interest rate assumption, you increase your actual determined contribution, which means the city has to contribute more into the pension fund, just because you're missing that assumption every year, so it's, again, kicking the can down the road, like with the, with the capital. And we do have a requirement to fund the actual determined contribution. So that was the, and then the mortality table also changed in the pension. We switched to a different table, and municipal retirees are living longer, was one of the outcomes with that maturity, change in mortality table. And then there was a couple other changes, so, again, just, from the retirement board's standpoint, it just made sense to get those assumptions trued up. And that, like, that interest rate one, we've been doing actually gradually over years, so we don't take a hit all in one year. So that's why you'll see the pension increases. The life insurance is truly just based on wages, it's kind of a calculation, we pay a percentage per thousand of wages for everybody for the, the life piece, so you'll see those may, may go up just a very, a little bit. And then the same with workers' comp, just from insurance standpoint, preparing for an increase. When we go down to the bottom, which is the operating expenses, the only thing that changed there was the contractual services. We dropped it from 80,000 down to 75,000, just because we've been truly more in that mark of the 75. And you'll see it in the actual for 2020, it was just a timing issue of why that's low, that's why it's only the 20, 23,000. But it's usually more between the 60 and 70, and we also leave a little bit in there in case there's any contractual services that we need to outsource. So those are the summary of the changes in the, the finance budget.
Okay, questions on finance? Counselor Norris?
Could you give me a quick idea? What is contract services in the finance department?
It would be the audit, the paying the town for collection of taxes, those are the two big ones that come out over there. And then there may be times where we have the auditors come in and do additional work if there's something that needs to be done, but that's usually. And the other piece that comes out of there sometimes is, um, with debt, we have, we'll have to, the financial advisor, if it's not, if, if we're just using it for consulting type services, one of the things that we did have a few years back was an IRS audit for bonds. So there's times where there's maybe fees that don't quite get rolled into the bonding, and then also you have legal fees that, with the contracts under negotiations and those types of things.
Right. Also, if you can help me, so the medical insurance, how much is it per person? Also, if you can help me, so the medical insurance, how much is it per person or per family?
It ranges, and it all depends. Again, we're self-funded, so what we get is allocated rates from Anthem. So we, we're our own pool when it comes to medical.
Right.
So what we do is we get the allocated rates from Anthem on our renewal every year. Anthem administers our plan for us, and they project out what that cost is going to be. And again, we have two different plans currently.
Right.
We have the PPO and the high deductible. And it can range anywhere, I believe now the single's around 15,000 to 30,000 for a family.
So that could explain why I'm seeing differences within department in the medical line?
Correct. So it's, and what, the way that the medical was done was a few years back, we actually went through and figured out everybody in every department, including retirees, because we do have retirees that still may be on insurance, trued that whole fund up. And then we've just been kind of seeing what we needed to go forward to keep, to stop spikes and valleys in each department's budget. If they go from a single person this year to a family next year, and then the following year back to a single. So we did a one-time true up. We'll probably do for it again, to be honest with you, to just kind of reevaluate that and look at it.
That makes a lot of sense. So the medical cost right now, is that a shared expense with active employees?
Active and retirees, correct.
Of what percent would be the active?
Again, it depends on which plan and which union. They range, the PPO ranges, I think currently, employees' cost share is anywhere from 16 to maybe 19%. Or the PPO is more around the lines, or the high deductible plan, rather, is more along the lines of 9% to 11%.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Any other questions on finance? Okay, and we're done? It takes us to the, I'm sorry, Ron?
Do we, as part of finance, do you want to do the non-departmental stuff, or is that scheduled for another day? I don't know how the, I don't know if we addressed it in the budget.
Is non-departmental, all right, let's go, let's go ahead.
Actually, can we, can we do that? Because it's a special meeting.
Well, it's a special meeting.
We can put it on for the next one.
Well, hold on.
It's not separate, I don't have it listed.
Well, so finance, non-departmental is a part of finance, right?
It's just the back section that we normally do in conjunction. I just don't know if...
Well, I think the non-departmental is a part of the finance, and they're not covered. Well, you know what? Since they're not covering it, it's a special meeting, let's just not, let's put it on one of the other meetings.
Okay.
That way, we're strictly following Robert's rules and, you know, won't have to defend that. Okay? Counselor Norris?
I'm sorry.
Yes, please. You have the floor.
So all expenses that are COVID-related, are they within the individual departments? Or are they somewhere in finance and reimbursements come into finance, or do they go to individual departments? How does that work?
So with the COVID-related stuff, it's all within each department, meaning if it was a utility, it would be with the utilities, whether it be electric water or sewer. If the mayor's office wanted to buy masks, they would charge to theirs. We also have gone through the budget of building facility line, which is building stuff, the sanitizers, those types of things, cleaning supplies would be in there. And then any reimbursement that comes back would be based on how it was submitted and which department. So if it was something that was paid for out of electric water or sewer, it would go back to that department. If it's something that was paid out of mayor, finance, H R, building maintenance, it would just come back into the general fund as a revenue line.
Any other questions? Hearing none? Need a motion to adjourn?
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Jill.